I'll call this meeting order. Ladies and gentlemen, board Monday, May 20 of 2013, the town office at 5:30 PM. We're gonna have a slight change in the agenda with a minutes of warrants. Then we'll do the animal control before we go into the executive session. So first item on the agenda in minutes from May 13.
Will there be some of this printed?
Okay, then a second. Any comments, any discussions in the minutes? If not, all in favor, that's four-four and one extension. Next item on the agenda, the warrants. And so you, Jim?
Nothing.
Greg?
Nothing, sir.
Sharon?
Nope.
All set.
Okay, now I'm gonna need you here. So that's two weeks in a row you've been a little stir. Alright, the next item on the, the next item on the agenda is the animal control ordinance. And Dan, I see you've highlighted the changes we've requested.
Yes.
In both Article nine and Article nine dash one. I don't think your people out here have copies of this ordinance. Okay, I'll just read the changes, then we'll move on to the last one. Uh, in Article nine dash, yeah, Article nine, under definitions, nine dash two dash zero four, excessive noise shall mean any noise that is created by a pet audible to an individual in a location where he or she is lawful, lawfully permitted to be, which noise occurs repeatedly for at least seven minutes period of time with one minute or less lapse of time between each noise during the seven minute period. So, hook up seven minutes, walk in there. You remember the discussion was about fifteen minutes or louder or whatever, and I think that was the only change in?
That was the only change in that one, yeah.
Okay, and then on Article nine dash one, we get into a commercial kennel. It reads, "Any place with a valid zoning permit in the town of Bennington for a kennel, such as such term is defined in the town of Bennington Land Use Development Regulations." The land use regulation defines kennel as "the boarding, breeding, raising, grooming, or training of four or more dogs, cats, or other household pets of any age for commercial use and/or which are not owned by the owner or occupant of these premises."
Joe, that's just for clarity's purpose, that just reiterate, reiterates what the current definition is in our land use regulations.
Okay, and then, uh, under licensing, under paragraph four, landowner permission, this is something new. The writ permission from the landowner of the property on which the private kennel will be operated shall be required. Is that correct, Dan?
That's correct. So we added that in just to make sure that landowners are aware of what's happening on their property.
Okay, and that's the only changes there. What I don't see, Dan, bring me to it, we had discussion about the liability, um, for the owner of the property.
Yeah, actually, Stu and Tom Jacobs and I talked about that a little bit, and Tom felt like that was probably a kind of a stretch and perhaps took the focus off of the folks that were most, um, responsible for the actions. So you guys can certainly try to put that in there, but that's a little bit diff, that's a little bit more, I'm not sure if that would pass muster.
Can you say that again, I'm sorry, I'm not getting that last part. Can you say that again, Dan, with just a little bit more, what you just said, you're talking about the liability, right?
You're about, you're, you're- Liability for landowner, not for kennel.
For the landowner, I mean, you, you guys had talked about perhaps finding some way to hold the landowner accountable for the actions of their tenant.
Okay.
Which is a fairly, it may be a much more difficult thing to, uh, to pursue.
But we're still gonna require the insurance for the personal-
Kevin, I'll write it.
Absolutely.
Okay, it has to have so.
Okay, before I, before I go through the board for comments on it, uh, Mr. Jensen called me Saturday, he cannot be here tonight, and I have to explain to him, I'm only the chairman, I don't have all seven votes, there's seven voting members on the board, I have to talk forty-five minutes, I asked him to send me an email that I would read tonight with his comments that he would like to make, so I'll do that right now, and then I'll include the, uh, the email, you can include them in your minutes, so we'll have them here on the record, okay? And then we'll go around to the board. Alright, hello, Joe, thanks for taking the time to talk to me today, sorry my phone lost service, here's what I would like you to read to the board for me. Paragraph one, "The dogs I own are show dogs that compete in, in weight, pull, and configuration events. These are pure pedigree animals that are bred down from champion to grand champion configuration in weight, pull, uh, pull dogs. I work with a breeder who gives me the dogs as pups and signs ownerships over to me under condition that I raise them in a family environment and show them, uh, so they can gain points and titles. Once a dog that I own makes champion, the deal with the breeder, and I have worked out, is the animal goes back to the breeder where it gets bred to dogs he currently is showing that have made champion and grand champion. I do not in any way, shape, or form breed dogs. I simply show them and raise them in a loving family environment, socializing them so they have an even keeled temperament." Paragraph two, "Once the breeding is done, the dog is retired and returned to my family to live out its life as a pet. Again, I have nothing to do with the breeding process, however, when the pups are engaged to leave the mom, I make a trip to the breeder's home in New York. Together, we go through the litter and decide which of the pups are show quality. At that point, I make my selection, transfer the ownership of the pup, and it's signed over to myself from the breeder, and the process of raising, socializing, and showing starts. I am entrusted with the highly valuable dogs, thus is why I, thus is why I spay or neuter them, which is simply not an option. I don't consider myself a kennel, and I'm simply a dog lover and do this as constructive hobby." Paragraph three, "I am in agree, agreements, agreements, never heard that word, that there should be an ordinance directed toward what I call backyard breeders who flood cities and towns with untitled, unstable, non-pet degree animals. However, I feel the ordinance is being, that is being proposed is unjust. I also have a very major concern and discrepancy with the ordinance as it is forcing me to either spay or neuter my pets, or admit to being something that I am not, i.e. a private kennel. I would also like each board member to review the Animal Welfare Act of nineteen seventy-six. It clearly states, 'No animal shall be caused undue harm by persons, government, or parliament.' Then ask yourselves, forcing me to have an operation performed on a happy, healthy animal satisfying ordinance is undue harm." Paragraph four, "I also want the board to be made aware this order affects only two people in the town of Bennington. Myself and Mr. Peter Susan. The ordinance of this nature is designed to combat a problem of great magnitude. I don't see how two people in the entire town of Bennington can be considered a problem of great magnitude, especially when you have massage pollers posing in front of prostitution. You have a drug problem that is running rampant through the town. These should be the areas of focus of concern, not me and my dogs who occasionally bark a little too much. Should this ordinance get passed away, get passed anyway, and the board decides to discredit my arguments, I will be appealing the decision to state level enforcing, and enforcing my civil liberty rights. As a resident and parent of the town of Bennington, and for the sake of the town Bennington as a whole, let's not turn this into a mockery. I end with, I'd like to thank the board for hearing me out and listening to my concerns. I also like to give a big thanks to you, Mr. Krausik, for allowing me to put this in an email and reading it to the board, as I am unable to attend and defend myself in person due to the fact that I'm working from three PM to eleven PM shift at Mac Molding and cannot take time off again. Again, thank you very much, and I trust that all of you to see this ordinance is biased and unjust. Sincerely, Derek Jensen of eighteen twenty U.S. That's his argument. I countered, during our forty-five, I countered back and forth about the neuter, I kept trying to stress that having a dog neutered, or any animal neutered, uh, is, is causing undue harm. Well, you know, listen, every agency I know of that has anything to do with animals always suggests that you gotta do your dogs spayed or neutered. Uh, in my case, and I told him on the phone, I, you all know that I have a, I have a pure bred German Shrewher pointer, and the condition of sale from the breeder was I have to have that dog neutered because the breeder's trying to protect the bloodline of this particular bloodline of dog I own. And I can understand that, I mean, it's a, it's a business for her, and she's a licensed kennel up in New York State. Uh, but he didn't wanna hear that, it's, it's causing harm to a healthy dog, and so on and so forth.
Well, or it's paid the fifty dollars, right? Because if you pay the fifty dollars, they don't have to be neutered, so that there's no harm.
If they're licensed.
As a private kennel, you pay the fifty dollars, you can have as many dogs, uh, than aren't neutered or spayed, so.
It's not requiring the neuter to move out, it's the fifty dollars.
Neither are, is that correct?
Right.
Well, yeah, but also as a private kennel, you have other conditions that you have to meet in order to exist and get that license, not just feed, but-
And actually, to me, the process he's describing is exactly right. I mean, he's got a deal where he's taking animals, trading them off, training them, putting that, getting them back, he's got an arrangement in a business organization to serve as a function when they retire. I mean, it's like saying, you know, I don't have a horse ranch, I just take them when they retire, you know, I mean, that's, you're, you're still what you are, you know, I mean, if that was next door to me, I would consider that a kennel. You know, I can see where these are complaints, and, and the way the ordinance is, that could be in any neighborhood in town. So, I mean, what he's explaining, I, you know, I feel it's, if you don't feel that your animals should be neutered, then you don't need to neuter your animals, you take care, but he's still-
You were here the last meeting, and I, I don't believe, the board corrected, he never brought that part up about the other guy in New York State. He did to Dan, or Dan knew this beforehand, Dan, is that correct?
Actually, I never heard about it, that, or, that, that's the most he's ever come forward with.
I, I heard him somewhere before, this evening up here, that he had this arrangement with this guy in New York State, that he was swapping dogs back and forth, and I'd heard that he'd bring the dogs up here to train them, to do that kinda stuff, but-
Right, but when he gets them and they're retired, then there's no reason not to neuter them because they're not show dogs anymore, that's what he said.
And whether the breeding has happened there or not, does not mean, excuse me, it's not a kennel, he's preserved his-
It's a, it's a part.
Yeah, he's, you know, in that process. To me, that part with the, you know, that role in it, it indicates that it is definitely a kennel, um, and should be, should be-
Well, anybody knows anything about dogs, one gets loose, and it's heat, it's gonna be breeding and curling.
Yeah.
It doesn't take long for that to occur.
Or fighting, or, you know, that type of thing, it's, so.
Pushing that to the side, though, my biggest thing with this, uh, passing through is making sure that all these animals have a good living environment, and once you start to increase the number of animals, all we really want to do is make sure that you have the space, you have the ability to give them the life that you'd want as a, a pet owner. So, if you're doing all that, it's a simple check the boxes, and that's fine with me, and also to make sure that your neighbors are treated well, as well, um, because that's, that needs to be a heavy concern. So, if the fifty dollars is all that's stopping them here from continuing this, this process, I mean, I, I would think there should be a number on there.
Well, the fifty dollars, but the liability is also, is one of his big things.
The insurance, right.
Out of the requirements and standards, is there anything on here that, I mean, not to make this all about this one individual, but it seems as though it really is, unfortunately, but is there anything on here that just, that can't do that, not necessarily because he says, "Well, I can't do it," but is there anything that would, out of these requirements and standards that would, um, not possible?
He's too close, he's too close to his neighbors. He would have to find another location or-
And again, that's a humane issue, to me, anyway.
Well, from the pictures that we saw the other day, he's got them all tied up in these little things.
Right, and again, not to make this about him, because I think you can push that to the side completely and say, we're making sure that these animals have what is considered a proper living environment.
Dan, did you happen to check with the state and see if they did pass a statute on the size of the, of the, for dogs that are-
I didn't find anything, um, any specific requirements on it at all, Joe, I did look at-
It does, so in paragraph D, Justin, um, section, number three?
Right.
It's show, it can't be located within a thousand feet of, or close to the resident.
We need to have a fairly significant size, these are property.
For the number of dogs he's got, you need a bigger space than he has.
But, um, I think most of it I'm on board with, there's something that strikes me as a little bit off, with putting requirements and standards in here that somebody just simply can not read, of the nature, or they're located. I mean, if every other requirement and standard was being met, and this noise ordinance separate piece was in effect also, it seems the amount of footage to somebody else's property is almost arbitrary, as long as all the other requirements and standards along with the noise ordinance piece, um-
I don't understand your, your, you know, closer to a thousand?
Yeah, I mean, if you, uh, you know, if you take, if you look at all the requirements and standards, you know, obviously, um, no excessive barking shown from the private kennel any time, I don't think we're gonna argue over, anybody's gonna argue over that. No training dogs for fighting, you know, nobody has an issue with that, I don't believe. You know, humane housing of the dogs, and that's something we all, we all would strive for and would require. But I'm just wondering a little bit about the, the, you know, the distance from other properties, as long as, you know, requirements, standards one, four, five, six, seven, and eight are being met, what does it necessarily matter how close you are to somebody else?
Well, in this case, I mean, in some cases, we've had these dogs tied on the property line and on other people's road, uh, to the other people's fences.
Right, which is not appropriate, no.
So you're gonna have to have some kinda standoffship between, because we'll get to men in a second. I had a specific question. Any other board?
Yeah, to the issue of liability, I was prepared to come here tonight and vote against this, because I thought it would be setting up a burden on property owners with respect to, uh, the amount of liability, and I called my insurance broker, and he told me that in fact, if you're a property owner already, you should be covered, so there should not be any-
But he's a renter.
But he's a renter.
Right. And we don't know, and that's the question I asked Dan, when we were here about the and/or permission, that's what he said, that, that was part of our discussion, remember last week, was whether or not the landowner should have some responsibility for liability if something happens.
Well, with respect to that, as a renter, uh, for non-aggressive breeds, I was told that you could get insurance coverage for as little as a hundred and fifty dollars a year.
For that, for five hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
But that's not aggressive breeds.
That's a non-aggressive breed.
And that's where he was taking issue as well.
Okay, any other board members before I ask the audience out here?
Again, I think this is going off of what Justin was saying, a thousand feet might be able, we might be able to change that around to say, um, just having a certain amount of property, because at a thousand feet distance from your neighbors, which I understand, you do, you don't want your neighbors to, um, to be disrupted in their lifestyle, but does that mean you have to put a fence up a thousand feet away from them?
No.
Or do you, I mean, how is that defined? Maybe you just need to have, again, I'm going back to having a good living, uh, a good, a good life for these animals, so you wanna make sure they have enough space, um, to run around, do whatever, but a thousand feet from your owner, does that mean you have to have a fence built up a thousand feet from each one of your neighbors?
No, it just does, the kennel shelter run shall not be located within a thousand feet or closer of the residence, other than the residence of the kennel.
Right, so you would have to have it fenced in within that distance from each, each neighbor.
If you and I live back to back, you'd have to keep your dog a thousand feet away.
A thousand feet away, at all times, so that you, now you're talking about a good amount of land that you have to start to own here and shelter off, so, and, again, I'm for making sure that we have these animals in the space that they need, but that, that's gonna be a tough one for any homeowner, I would think.
But it still doesn't look like from the pictures you saw.
No, I know, I'm just pushing that to the side.
Anybody would have to, would have to come down in and meet these other requirements.
Yeah, if you have a private kennel.
But this is also, the reason why we're going after this is because in most cases, you're gonna have some sort of cash flow coming in, um, and so this would be a business expense and something that you're looking at doing to, to make profit, and, uh, you need to have some space, and I think we need to redefine what that is, a thousand feet might be a little too, too much, I know we're trying to make sure the neighbors have-
Well, he said, okay, don't get confused, I mean, there's a difference between the private kennel and the commercial kennel.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I would expect a commercial kennel to see a cash flow, but a private kennel, not necessarily so. Uh, you know, I mean-
I guess, yeah, I guess I just find it hard to believe that, yeah, I guess it could be a hobby, and there might not be any cash flow, but I know that breeder's making money, and if he's doing all the legwork, I'm sure there's some sort of, sort of agreement there.
I, I'm comfortable with the majority of this ordinance, and one case I'm having a real problem is, is number three is a thousand feet.
So what's, uh, what was acceptable?
I think we look again at the space, um, again, my major issue is making sure that one dog needs this much space, two dogs need this much space, then once you hit five, you need, you need to go in there, make sure you have an area that, that can run around in.
Well, indications, when you get the product, what we're calling a kennel, you need to have a certain sized yard, you know, and you're not gonna, you know, somebody all of a sudden gets an interest in dogs, and they live on a quarter acre surrounded by other homes, and they decide they're gonna start raising dogs, or lots of other different kinds of animals, you know, turn it into a farm or something like that. That's not good neighboring, you know, I mean, it's just, you're, you don't have the proper piece of property to do it, and you start doing, you know, in many cases, the thing.
Well, where you can run into an issue too, is if you think about a thousand feet from your neighbor, you could have five hundred acres on the front of you, and, you know, have twenty feet behind you, and your neighbor's property is right there, and you're, you're, you don't meet that thousand foot requirement, even though you have five hundred acres out in front of your house.
Here, here's the thing, and, uh, my house sits on six acres, I cannot have a kennel on my, on my six acres of land. I got my horses up there, I got my dog, I got my chickens up there, I can raise my pheasants up there, but I can't have a kennel up there, because my property goes six hundred forty feet back or four hundred twenty road front, that's six acres. Okay, what I've seen before is where the dogs cannot be housed or confined within so many feet of the neighbor's property line, and, and that's where I was thinking when I was looking at this thousand acre, a thousand, a thousand feet, I don't know, but there's any place in Bennington that could really have a private kennel over that.
Right, about a hundred yard.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is it, would it make, would it be fair to say that a dog can have be confined or housed within so many feet of a neighbor's property line, whatever that number of feet would be accessible?
A hundred yards really diminishes his hundred dollar mark.
Well, then we're just knocking off a hundred feet, right?
No, three hundred three, three hundred feet, a hundred yards, three hundred feet.
Oh, I thought you said so.
Okay, let's let the board hold here, let's let the citizens that are here, who would like to speak first? Kevin, you wanna come up here? So, you've heard our discussion, where we're going with this?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to stick to the, uh, the ordinance, but I'm very concerned about where the conversation's going at the moment. The thousand, there's things in here that I would, uh, that are good, there's things, more things that I would like to see. I was in favor of having the landholder or landowner be held liable, because I think it's the only way you're gonna get a secure claim, okay, and there'd be some leverage. So, there's some, gotta be some compromise to the whole thing. I think a thousand feet is imperative, because some of these other arguments are subjective, they're qualitative. We make a phone call, there's a dog barking too much, I don't know, the police officer, as defined last week, has to use their discretion, which is totally appropriate, but you go over, you go over, and you look at these things, a lot of them are subjective or qualitative. The thousand feet is the one that really sold me on this ordinance, because it's quantitative, it's easily discussed, and there won't be daily arguments, and, and I'm looking out throughout the town, so, um, both for, for that, and also, I think somebody mentioned right here, for aggressive breeds, um, we are talking aggressive breeds here, so, if a party can't get insurance, so be it, I think the, the private market has to find it accordingly. I hope that in cases like my neighborhood's experience of the landlord has insurance, but I gotta tell you, I have my doubts, and if that doesn't pass here, okay, I, I can probably live with that as long as the rest of this is held up, but, um, I don't know what else to say, I really don't wanna redress the, the letter, because there are things in there that I totally don't agree with, but I wanna stay on the ordinance. We're talking here a private kennel, not a commercial one, not used for cash flow, and I, I cannot, I cannot emphasize enough that we need objective standards, otherwise, arguments will continue in a neighborhood like my own. Thank you.
Bob, is there anything else to say?
Yeah, that's my biggest problem with, you know, with Mr. Jensen himself, you can't rely on him. Now, if you go back, maybe you should, you'll trace it, the dog started off, one year ago, with two, he got to be seven, and then that was it, after a land, I talked to landlord, no more, and it's seven, now it's thirteen, and he said he's not breeding them. Don't think wrong there, in some ways. And this is a business he's doing, but it definitely, in my case, he had enough, you know, how, he tied the dogs to my fence, and ate, the dog ate a hole to my fence, I gave you pictures of it, and you can't even go in the backyard, because my back, my line to my backyard in his house is probably twenty feet, and he's got thirteen dogs out there, can you, can you imagine sending their kids out there and, those pit bulls? That's my biggest problem, and any other thing is, even if I get out of there, try to sell your property, nobody in their mind wants to go out there and buy up your property out. So that's, well, I know, Mr. Jensen himself, I've had out with, but you can't rely on him at all, at anything. If you go right now today, and he was supposed to move all his junk from one side out to the other side, you'll find his five, five dogs out there now, and there's two big pipes of, of debris manure, we don't wanna call it, right there, he's been there for three weeks, right out in the open, right by my fence, anybody can see it, it's out there. So that's the big problem, that you, this guy is, by name, is a regular person.
Okay, Bob, you give me a stick to your, Dan, can you state your name, please?
Barbara Allard, I live at Autumn Acres, and-
Your husband was wanting to talk to us last week?
Yes, my husband's here.
Oh, there, there you go.
I just need to make sure that that thousand feet stay in there, because Mr. Jensen, when I first confronted him, he threatened me with his dogs. He is breeding his dogs, his dogs are out there twenty-four seven, they are not pets. The chains used to hit my fence, until Mr. Pesacchio was nice enough to put a fence, a bud to mine, his dogs growl, they hiss, they chew into fences, we have no protection any longer, we have no protection from this man and his animals, we need that thousand feet, because my fence is pulled in a foot. He had his dogs on my property, I told him to remove those dogs from my property, I'm liable, and the dogs were hitting my fence with the chains that they were tied up on twenty-four seven, they were out there in five degree below weather, living in garbage can. When I first confronted him, they were not rabies, they were not licensed, he is selling them, he told us one of his dogs will get him twenty-five hundred dollars stud fee, so you take from that what you want, but we're desperate, we're desperate to get away from this man and his animals, because he has threatened three people on Autumn Acres, one on East Road, he has even threatened the people that work at my home with a baseball bat. This, this is scary, this is very frightening, we need to be away from this person, because he's dangerous, and he runs a very dangerous operation, and, and we need some protection, we are begging the town to help us with protection from this person, and from people like that, because the people in this town need some type of protection.
Have you, have you made a complaint to the police department at all? I know, I know you have with the dogs, but have you, have you spoken to about the threatening nature?
There's probably sixteen complaints out on this man last year, I have gone to Mr. Hurd, I've gone to Mr. Hoodview, I've gone to Mr. Monk's, I've gone to the chief of police, we as, as neighbors have gone to all of these people, because this man is scary, he really is.
Have you, have you, have you mentioned to the police department the threatening nature of what's going on, aside from the fact that the dog's barking, but the need of bed threat?
Everybody is aware that the man has threatened the people in my neighborhood.
I mean, some of this sounds like a lot more of, significantly more of a police issue, you know, with assault behavior beyond the scope of a dog ordinance.
Justin, I'm gonna have to throw in, there is that application to it in this particular case, but trying to stick to the ordinance-
And I know it all comes from, it's, it's a sticky situation, because one thing comes from the other.
That, that I think accentuates my point, which is, we need to objectify the ordinance as best we possibly can, hence the thousand feet. Otherwise, somebody will move near this neighbor to near that neighbor, and there's new neighbors who just moved in who'll be exposed to it, so, sticking to the ordinance, the more you can objectify it, so it's a checklist, as somebody said, the better.
What I, what I'm just looking at here is, you know, it's, it's hard to craft one ordinance specifically toward one individual, because-
And you should, I understand.
You know, we're working towards what's best for everybody, um-
Let's, let's recall Dan's conversation, we started this, so, we found that there was a gray area in our land use regulation, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan?
That's correct.
That, um, you know, we picked up on this with, without this neighbor being here, we should have probably had an ordinance to consider this to begin with, to pick neighborhoods from just coming on in, uh, from that area. Yes, as most ordinance do, and I'm sorry to say, always stem from a complaint or an incident or something, you start to look at it, because you can't look at everything as a, as a legislative body, think of all the good things you gotta do. So, that's where it came from, and I, I think, uh, we need to stick to the, the ordinance pretty much so, and yes, in this case, it might affect one or two people, uh, but we found that there are other people who have more than, uh, what, ten dogs licensed that are, that are complying with everything, and it seems to be not an issue on that thing, so.
So, just, just to be clear, this operation would not be allowed as a commercial kennel? Uh, I think he's probably operating at least identically, close to identically as a commercial kennel, but we haven't been able to prove it, so, he couldn't do this in that area under land use and development regulations, so, it's not in the right zone, and, and the kennel regulations require more land, there are a lot of requirements as far as, because this is a very intrusive operation, and I agree with Mr. Pesacchio, the only way we're gonna get at these is to have objective standards that we can say, yep, there's five dogs there, And I agree with Mr. Pesacchio, the only way we're gonna get at these is to have objective standards that we can say, yep, there's five dogs there, yep, it's too close, yep. And, and, you know, it's, that's the way to get it. And I know it may be somewhat arbitrary, but you, that's how you craft legislation, you have to find out what, what's the right compromise.
Hang on, Dan.
Well, that's, that's kinda where I got it a little bit last week when I started talking about, um, creating a different class of kennel and how it kinda muddies it up a little bit. If you were, you, you saying you think this basically mirrors what a commercial kennel is, it would not be allowed to where he is currently, correct?
That's correct.
Based upon the zoning ordinances and such. Why can't we stop it based upon that, the fact that?
Because we don't have, we cannot, we haven't been able to collect the evidence, and it's very difficult and expensive.
And what, what would that consist of, just rough, ba, roughly, I mean?
We have to get proof that he's, uh, that he's financially benefiting from the, from what he's doing there.
Or if he doesn't have a title on the dog, which he says he is, this is where I, I questioned his thing. I mean, uh, I see some good old boy network working in this thing between the breeder and the, the alleged breeder in New York State, and this guy who is taking dogs as a show and socializing them. I question whether the title for these puppies are actually being transferred, but we don't require any owner to show title a dog. I know, I registered mine, they just wanna see the health certificate from the veterinarian, and that's it. And pay my seven dollars a year, and, and that's all I gotta go, but still, you know, I got a title on a dog, I have the pedigree on the dog, and somebody, but there's nothing requiring us to show that.
So, Joe, in this letter, I'm trying to recall, did he say that he in fact is not the actual owners of the dogs, he's sort of housing them?
Well, he says.
Where they registered in the town? Him?
They're transferred to him, and then after they are ready, or they win, they get transferred back to the breeder.
What he says is that when a litter is born, allegedly in New York State, he gets down with the breeder, and they decide which dogs is he gonna bring up here to Vermont, to socialize the dog, train the dogs to pursue the champion and grand champion of, uh, of the species of the dog. When the dog wins that champion, if he's there, or if he doesn't, he goes back to the guy in New York State, he goes, spools the dog or whatever he has to do. But if the dog's been successful through its life, and I don't know what a pit bull's life expectancy is, let's say ten years, twelve years, if he's not fighting, then he brings the dog back just to live out its life, uh, in a, in a family in Vermont. Uh, that's what he, he claims in his letter to us.
Can I ask where the thousand feet came from? Is that, is that based in anything existing in the commercial side, or? I'll be honest, it's just looking at other ordinances around the country, there seem to be a number that came up.
That's a fairly stable.
I think what's important to recognize is, you know, I don't know if anybody lives next to a dog that barks a lot. It is very intrusive, and even a thousand feet, you're probably gonna still hear it, but maybe it'd be less of an, of an impact. And if you got five or more of them barking?
Or thirteen.
Well, you know, the neighbors don't care if it's commercial or private.
Right, but the commercial, you're gonna have a DRB looking at it, it's gonna be structured in certain zones, they have to get a tenant.
It's just the fact that it's private doesn't make it any less annoying or any less of a stress on the neighborhood or the infrastructure or that. So, I mean, I think defining a private kennel as an entity makes good sense because, you know, if I'm fixing trucks in my backyard for free, and I got truck parts and trucks revving up all day, my neighbors don't care if I'm getting paid or not, you know? It's a truck yard, you know?
So, you know, from that perspective, I think, I think it makes a good, it makes a good sense to, to define that entity. And, and his definition to me is a kennel. I mean, what he's described to me, I would definitely consider that an operating kennel, for money or not.
That's why I agreed, I wanted to put it in writing, that's why I said I agree it.
I mean, I don't have a problem with either one of these ordinances.
Mr. Allard, you want, go ahead, state your name to the record, please, and go ahead, so it's like a second.
Ryan Allard, Automakers Road, and I just wanted to speak to the thousand feet. I agree that it's, puts a black and white objective, um, way of looking at this issue for a kennel. I think a thousand feet is one way of ensuring that thirteen dogs or any number of dogs have enough space in which to live and be careful of property. Uh, I also think that when we're talking about dangerous breeds, a thousand feet is not too far away to keep these dogs from children or grandchildren. In virtue, keep it that way.
Mr. Allard, can I ask you, uh, would you mind if we take the note you sent to us and have that included in the record? Because it was very well written and states the points that really have been brought up.
Yes, I agree with that, it was very nice.
I would be happy to.
So, I'll give my copy there. Thank you a lot for your time. Okay, anyone else wanna say anything about this?
I just had that one question. Did you get my email today about that?
I did, and I, and I didn't actually get a chance to talk to Dan. Did you see Greg's email?
I didn't know it except one. Oh. Um, I sent it last night or this morning, so, and this is strictly a legal point. Um, in section B, uh, under the enforcement section, it says, "The penalty of a hundred dollars shall be imposed for initial violation of any provision of this ordinance." The penalty for the second offense, one year, will be, within a year will be two hundred fifty dollars. Penalty for each subsequent violation within one year period should be five hundred dollars. In cases where a violation is not contested, a waiver fee shall be paid in amounts of fifty for the first offense, hundred and twenty-five for the second offense, each one period, and three hundred for each subsequent. Each day that violation continues shall constitute a separate violation in this ordinance. My limited studies of constitutional law tell me that that's an incentive not to exercise your rights to contest a, a complaint. And that, that's the only thing, I just wanna make sure that that would hold up.
Well, in, in Vermont, uh, most, most of our, our municipal ordinances and our traffic ordinances, both state and local, allow for the waiver fee. Uh, I think it's meant to avoid a lot of court time, a lot of tying of the system
Right.
uh, with frivolous arguments and appeals. So, I, I think it would hold muster. I didn't get back to you, because I meant to talk with Dan today about that, and.
But if there's precedent, then I'm fine. Every word is been reviewed by counsel, and he believes it's a hundred percent enforceable. That's fine.
Okay, so we have ordinance with changes, uh, that Dan's incorporated from last week. Any more discussion? If not, I can accept the motion.
Do you want my motion to accept both of them?
Well, there's one more question out there, and that was about going after the landowner.
Go ahead.
Uh, well, one thing I was wondering about was, um, I know there's certain laws in terms of not, or rejecting a renter because of, you know, having kids or pets. Is that, can that be pushed on the landlord? Like, if they apply to rent from you as the landlord, uh, would you have to accept them? Or could you deny them for having a certain number of animals? Would that be a legal issue? You can deny them?
Basically, I think for, you know, the obvious, animals can be, you know, just being against, but you're right about that.
And I think the liability would probably become a civil issue if there were an incident, right? Like, the same thing when, you know, if there's an incident at the bar, we've had issues where there's been collisions from a drunk driving, and they sue the bar owner and the landlord. Right. You know, and that becomes a civil issue over. So long, yeah, so I guess where I was going with that was, so long as the landlord can say, you can't be here because you have this many pets in your private kennel, then I, I guess I wouldn't see any issue with going after the, the landowner.
But, you know, I think we've done this ordinance, so we made the landlord aware of the fact that he has to give permission to gather if it's all the other requirements, or he didn't have to do that before.
Yeah, and I think this is a really great addition because that puts the landowner on some kind of notice to better times with this, if he has a mortgage. You know, the mortgage jumping might not be too happy to hear that he's granting permission for ten, or whatever dollars.
She's doing what you have a trampoline.
Right. I still, I still think I have a little bit of an issue with this footage in this. I think, I think we're creating an ordinance. We're defining what a private kennel is, and I think with a, with a thousand foot setback, we're almost excluding the, the possibility that one of these could even exist.
You wanna make a motion to change what the number is?
Yeah, I would, um, I'd be interested in entertaining a different number. I don't know what the right number is. I just, I think a thousand feet, I mean, it's pushing it almost out into a rural area where it's probably zoned where you could just be considered a commercial kennel.
Right.
But why, then why create a, then why create a private kennel?
Well, I think people live in town for a reason.
So we don't have to prove commercial use, okay? I'm gonna have to brand those dogs, and every time I go out there, he's telling me, he tells me he sells them, he tells them he sells them, okay? How does the town prove that he sells them? So, private kennel takes it out of the proof of commercial use legally and leaves it right there. Absent that, you might as well forget it, and we're right back calling the police every other day, animal control, et cetera, so.
I still, yeah, and I, I appreciate what you're saying, and like, I, I agree with
You gotta live it.
The vast, yeah, I agree with the vast majority of this ordinance where I think the thousand feet is.
Well, make a motion with a number at.
I'd make a motion to cut that in half to five hundred feet.
You have a motion, five hundred, you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor? That's two, all opposed? That's one, two, three, four, five, okay? Now I'll take a motion on the amendments as together as discussed.
On both ordinances?
Both ordinances.
Separate, please.
All right, then, take a motion on, uh, Article nine.
I'll make a motion to set Article nine as revised.
I'll second that. Okay. Any discussion on Article nine? All in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, let's take on nine dash one.
We'll make that motion as well, set nine dash one as revised for this evening.
Okay, have a motion, and have a second. Any discussion on this one? All in favor? And then it's five, four, all opposed, two. Motion passes. All right, Dan, for the record, explain now, the cool off period, the waiting period, when this actually goes into effect.
Okay, um, there's a sixty day period before it goes into effect. During that time period, any citizen has the right to petition for a, for repeal. Um, but after that sixty days, it goes into effect, assuming there's no repeal, yeah, or petition, and we would begin enforcing it through the animal control officers.
We're gonna circulate the ordinances, there, there's a signature page at the back of each ordinance, and I put that out there so that. And I'm gonna pass down.
Sign it or not.
Here's the email, we'll include in the minutes from Mr. Jensen, and here is a, is a note from Mr. Allard. Let's make sure we include that in our record also, okay?
John, another question, it's to order, Dan.
Go ahead.
And the only way somebody could appeal this is through the process of government, getting signatures, too.
Yes.
Or they could, the select board can act at any time as well.
Absolutely. The legal right they have to appeal is, like, asking the select board to act, and that's right.
Okay. I wanna thank all you people for coming, and, uh, you all understand the procedure, we still have a sixty day period before the ordinance goes into effect.
Very good.
And I'm sure the suggestion, be aware, when you read the paper in the morning, what did you want? Thanks for coming, folks. Sorry, sorry for the seating delay. Okay, uh, is Michelle up here now?
Yes.
Michelle, I, I'm sorry, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna change this agenda around a little bit. In your packet, you have a request for how we're gonna handle the other four parties.
Yes.
Good, I got it.
There was a recommendation that, uh.
Hold on a second.
I'm sorry, is this, have you moved to do, is that your session?
No, no.
That's nine point one.
Oh, right here. Yeah, I feel bad. Because I want everything else.
Michelle, go ahead and review the positions and the people one more time, who we still have to say.
Sure. We still have the development review board, you have two positions open.
And who are they?
Um, well, you have two positions open, but you have three applicants.
Okay.
Um, you have one new applicant.
Dale Garrity.
Dale Garrity, and two incumbents, Daniel Mollberg and Milt Surdam.
Okay.
And then, um, you filled the historic preservation commission your last meeting, and you filled the housing authority the last meeting.
Yes.
Um, you still have the board of listeners position, one opening, you have two applicants. You have a new applicant, Dale Garrity, and you have your incumbent, Michael Keen.
Okay.
Um, planning commission, you have two positions open. Um, Dale Garrity, a new applicant, and you have two incumbents, Charles Kopp and Michael McDonough. I just received a letter in the mail today, Mr. Devino. Uh, he applied, and you interviewed him.
This is form state for that as well.
Yeah, you filled him, uh, his position, um, at the regional commission, so, um, he just applied for the planning commission. We see that, I just say that you have not received that, because we just got it today.
Here, here for which stand we're, our next meeting, regular meeting, is not until the tenth of June. We're sitting here on the twentieth of May. We've got mostly incumbents except for Dale Garrity.
Which you mentioned the.
We've already interviewed, you weren't here. The issue is whether or not we wanna get all these folks together at one time for a meet and greet for those of you who wanna ask questions. I mean, personally, I don't need to ask these guys anything, I've been, you know, I've seen them, but somebody may want it. We wanna get all the others to at that time and then act, and we'll go around it on the tenth. If not, we bring them in on the tenth, or we have another special meeting, plus we've got some other ones scheduled that we've gotta be reserved. So, how do we wanna handle this? Do we wanna set up a meet and greet for this Thursday? Is that what we said, Michelle?
Well, um, that's what, uh, I had had a heads up, spoke with a student, had a heads up from Tom, but Sharon had mentioned that you guys wanted to talk about it tonight, so that's what, I'm happy to set that up for Thursday, if you wanted to do that. Basically, talking about, um, your incumbents being, um, Michael McDonough, Charles Kopp, Michael Keen, uh, Daniel Mollberg, Milt Surdam. Um, and then whether, because you've already interviewed Mr. Devino, I don't know if he would wanna talk with him about any commission questions, I know you.
We are, we are electing, we are.
So then it's.
To different commission.
Different, different.
He's applied for another commission?
I just received a letter today that he's interested in the planning commission now.
Oh, addition?
Right.
How many positions are open?
Um, two positions for planning commissions. And right now, you have Dale Garrity's letter as a new, um, candidate, and you have two letters from the current incumbents still wishing to keep their seats.
Which is Mollberg and?
Uh, no, Mike, for planning commission, Michael McDonough and Charles Kopp.
All right, all right.
We're talking about approximately six people, I mean, we interviewed them all, you know, most of them we know. But I still think if we're gonna interview some, we should interview all. Couple of questions I would like to ask, I'm sure. An hour and fifteen minutes, you know, most of the, you know, ten minutes of pop, or most of these people who, at least faces we know. You know, just some face, there's a couple of people that I don't know, I haven't spoken with.
Well, that's why we wanna set up just a meet and greet.
Yeah, but Michelle, what can we do in a meet, I mean, we're sitting here in this informal, you know, we got six people in here, hey, I'm for housing authority, I'm going for the planning commission, this one's for VCRC.
For the incumbents that we already know.
Well, there's some, we don't.
I mean, there's, not everybody knows them, and I sat in that seat a year ago, and there were a lot of guys that have been on the board for twenty years, and I didn't know that, you know. Some of them I know very well.
I mean, there's gonna be a couple of people that are gonna come in that everybody knows, and, um, we're gonna ask them two questions, and they're gonna be five minutes and out the door.
Okay, so I guess what I'm hearing in the sense is, I mean, we, we're gonna have to set up the interview, so it'll be on ten.
Okay, on June tenth?
And let's, uh, let me ask you this now. Of all the ones, Dale Garrity is the only one.
We've already interviewed her.
We've already interviewed her. Do we need to bring Dale Garrity into the position?
I don't think, no, we've already interviewed her, I don't think we're gonna ask her to come back in again. Go ahead.
So.
So we're looking at Charles, uh, we would start with, um, we have Dan Mollberg, Milt Surdam.
All incumbents.
Yep, and we have, um, Michael Keen, Charles Kopp.
Incumbent.
Mike McDonough.
Incumbent.
Do you want to talk to Mr. Devino about the planning commission?
Question, do you wanna, you wanna talk to him about that, guys?
Or with his interview with VCRC, are you comfortable with knowing his background?
He talked about the other board, but I think he should have been talking about why he must have.
All right, schedule him, schedule him first.
So six, six interviews?
Schedule him first, we'll do all six, we'll start at five thirty, let's push the select board, actually, no, we gotta keep the select board the same. Let's start at five with the interviews, let's get them all done on ten.
Okay, start at five.
And we'll do Mr. Devino first, and then bring the incumbents in.
Okay, five PM on June tenth. Okay, have it, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, great. All right, now, uh, let's see, now we're ready, motion to go into executive session to discuss contracts.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Let's take, let's take a few minute breaks, then break down the camera.